To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, December the 9th, 2016 at 9:00 AM at the community center, 3500 Edgewater Drive. Please silence your cell phones if you haven't already. Consent agenda. Minutes from the regular board meeting of supervisors, the meeting held Friday, October the 28th, 2016, golf financials for September 2016, and the tracers report, September 2016. I need a motion to approve, please.
Sub move.
Second.
Comments from the board? None from Mike? None? Back to the board. Chrissy, would you call the roll, please?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President White?
Yes.
Okay, move on to the action agenda. A resolution, number 2016-11/18-51A. A resolution of the Southern Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve participation in the Highlands County Local Mitigation Strategy Working Group by appointing to general manager as a member and the finance director as an alternate member. Need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Tanya, do you want to cover that a little bit and let the public know what this is all about?
Yes, actually, on the resolution, we'd like the finance director to be the member and myself to be the alternate member. I apologize, do you?
I just switched them, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, we have, we received an invitation to participate in the Local Mitigation Strategy Workshop Group for Highlands County, and the attached letter is from Commissioner Jim Brooks, if you had a chance to look over it. And this group develops and maintains a comprehensive plan for disasters that may affect our community, so I think this is a good participation work group that we should be a part of.
I read it right off of the, I read it right off the agenda, and it's switched on the agenda.
It's switched on the agenda, okay, my apologies.
Okay.
Are you, okay.
Any discussion from the board?
No.
Public comment? Back to the board. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President White?
Yes.
Okay, item number B. A resolution, number 2016-11/18-52. A resolution of Southern Lake of Sebring Improvement District to award bid number 16-09 for general electric service work. Electrical service work, not electric. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make it, Mr. Second.
Tanya, do you want to cover a little bit of what that is?
Yes, just to give you a background on the electrical services, here in the district for the past year, we have needed an electrician for a variety of reasons and a variety of times, meaning times of day. And the finance department and Mr. Hurley felt like it would be a good idea to go ahead and try to solicit bids for these types of services. And we were looking for an electrician that could provide us a service 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, especially in the case of emergency. We received only one bid from Mid-Florida Electric. They have provided us references. Mike Hurley has talked to the company himself.
Yes, I met with the company itself.
A little closer, Mike.
Sorry. I met with the company, I actually met with two or three companies. We really need a contract that we have a contractor on call for 24 hours a day, and we're actually trying to do it to all the trades that we don't have in here, like AC and the electrical. This company, I met with, they understand they have to be here within an hour, 24 hours a day. They also gave us rates that they charge us, so we'll have an idea when they come in here what they'll be charging us. It's very important to have contracts with these guys because then they can't gouge us either. In the past, I've always had contracts with certain contractors that we can use, plus they also know the area, so if we send them out to a job, they'll understand where they're going and areas that they have to work on, so it's very big.
How close is this $60 an hour to what we're currently paying?
That's, Omar, can you answer?
So I've pulled a few invoices of what, usually, over the past year, we've been using Highlands Electric along with Mark Palmer and some other companies. We've been paying a service charge of $30 just for them to come out along with a $70 per hour fee.
So this is cheaper?
This new bid has no service charge, it has a $60 per hour fee, and it's a flat rate. We've also included a 15% markup, so we know what they're paying, we'll pay 15% on top, they can't just charge us whatever they want for materials. It's a set markup on everything across the board.
Okay, what about the overtime, is it comparable?
The overtime that...
Odd hours, I want to say.
So between 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, they'll be charging us $60 an hour for an electrician, $20 an hour for an helper, and then for outside of normal hours, it'll be $120 per hour.
Okay, how does that compare to what we've had?
We haven't run into that situation often, I try to look for a few invoices, so it'd be hard to tell, but in case, you know, we have something that goes wrong with an event or something that's going on after hours, at least we know what we're going to pay, it's just not thrown up in the air.
Okay. Board comment?
Well, that's one of the questions I was asking, is this a normal rate? On the other positions that we might have a contractual agreement with in the future, do you go by like, which ones require a state license and licensity and so forth, is that what you're going to go by?
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah? No, I'm good with this.
Okay, Mark, anything?
No, there are, from a contract standpoint, there's no formal commitment other than we'll have them, that we don't pay any kind of flat rate.
Right, exactly, it's just the work that they do.
Okay, so it's strictly for the work they do?
Right, it's just the work that we call them in on.
Okay, and is there a minimum call? In other words, if they come out and they discover that there's not really an issue, do we have, get charged for them?
I think it's one hour.
One hour?
One hour.
Just wanted to know.
No, I'm fine, as long as those two are okay with it.
Okay. Public comment? Back to the board. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President White?
Yes.
Okay, item number, item number D. Resolution number 2016-11/18-54. A resolution of the Southern Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve sole source purchase of a Toro irrigation system from Wesco Turf Incorporated budgeted in the general fund.
I think you skipped one.
I skipped one?
I think so.
President?
I'll go back to it, okay.
Okay.
I've already marked it all, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Need a motion, you want to just go back to it right now? Let's skip it and then come back to it. I need a motion for this, for number D, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Where's Jim at? Jim, you want to bring this up, explain this a little bit to us?
Yes. I'm sorry, I was informing my superintendent where the community center is.
Okay. Does he need to be here for that?
Well, he can be helpful, but you can ask me any questions you would have relative to the irrigation station, is that what we're on now?
Yeah, yes. I'm sorry, I skipped over one, Troy.
No, no, specifically, I mean, with the relocation of our temporary facilities, we need to relocate that station. At this time, we're not going to install the weather mapping part of it, it wouldn't make sense to install it and move it over to the temporary location and then move it back. So when we get the new maintenance facility in place and we move it back then, that's when we'll make the decision as to whether the weather mapping will benefit us at that time, but it doesn't make fiscally good sense to install that part of the irrigation system now and have it involved in the move. It's more prudent to wait until we move back and have that installed when it's in one fixed location.
Okay, now, how do you bring this, where are you going to actually put this unit at, then?
I'm honestly not familiar with the exact location of where it, you know, when it comes back where it's going to be, so...
Okay, where, on this temporary setup, though, where are you going to put it?
We better wait for Raymond, and I don't even know that he can answer that question, you know, we're in the middle of transition.
I can answer.
What we know is that we can't survive with what we have now, and that it's, you know, of the utmost importance, actually, that we execute the contract today, you know, with the one week wait and a December 5th drop dead date of being out of that area, you know, we have to execute this now, and it is sole source, so there isn't really another choice. When we, when we looked at the other vendors, you'd actually have to bring in all new software, you know, and you'd bring in a new Rainbird system, which is, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars minimum to do.
Okay.
So it's a very straight, you know, straightforward decision.
Okay.
I just had one question, just one, just for a bit of information, because you and I have talked about this, we've got some problems with our irrigation system, don't we? We need additions and some new heads, and so we got an expense coming up there, don't we?
Yes, well, there's difference, I guess, when you, when you look at any golf course, you know, now, depending on when it's built, there's obviously, you know, the, every standing part of the course, especially the irrigation system, is deteriorating. Our systems are older, and so there's, you know, been a lot of advancements from when these systems were installed. You know, we have to turn on heads as a block, you know, so in other words, we've got four heads or six heads that are put together, if you've got a wet spot on the side of a tee, you might have to, or a dry spot, you might have to, you know, water two spots that already have too much water, you know, to keep that area from drying out too much. But other than just the technology that you've lost, the major exposure that we have now, and it's not unlike to me having a delivery service and having a car that, you know, has 125,000 miles on it, it, you know, it might run to have 200,000, or it might, you know, have a problem where you have to replace it immediately. The front nine of deer, the irrigation system on that nine is, you know, definitely failing and is in a situation where we could, you know, lose our irrigation on that, on that nine and have a difficulty where we could have a week to two weeks, you know, where we have to find a way to, you know, keep the grass alive. Luckily, Bermuda's a very resilient grass, but it's really, it's a situation that, as Raymond's come in, it's his top priority to conduct an audit of that irrigation system and apprise us of where we, you know, where we stand. We're not in a situation that, you know, a number of other courses aren't in, it just might not be one appropriate for, you know, our goals of where we want the golf course to go. At the current time, if something breaks on much of our irrigation system, the parts aren't made anymore, and we actually have to, you know, try to come up with an intermediate fix while we send it back to the company to have the part either repaired or custom remade. So it's not a good situation, you know, it's one that I'm going to be working with Raymond on that, where we're looking, you know, more forward, because this has come upon us a little bit quicker, you know, than we would have liked. But it's not something where we haven't been prudent in taking care of the system, it's just basically where it now.
Yeah, I totally understand that, and those units, the boxes where you control them and so forth, I know they come in blocks with those switches, and I've been on a golf course where we had to replace the heads and upgrade the heads, and that's expensive.
And I think that's, you know, where we're at, our understanding, you know, we're not having a lot of blowouts, so the lines that carry the water, you know, are relatively secure, are there, you know, they're in good shape, and, you know, irrigation systems are pretty restrictive for their cost. If we, you know, down the road, 10 years from now, looking at a new system, you know, those are restricted, so, you know, right now, the thing we're looking at beyond this one system is just analyzing the boxes on each nine and coming up with kind of a replacement schedule of when it would be prudent to do, you know, each nine of the golf course. Beyond that, it's another thing on Ramon's, you know, top list is, you know, a water audit of how we're using the water and trying to determine, you know, selected areas that might have a 360-degree head.
Right.
Then if we change that to 180-degree head, you know, we can save, we can save water. That, I would say that's probably a project for next, for next year, and it's not anywhere near the expense of, of what the controllers, you know, will be over a period of time.
Jim, I do, actually, I have a couple questions. I'm not even, I don't know a lot about this equipment at all, so I'm going to ask for a little bit of an education. This is a controller that handles nine holes at a time, or does it handle the whole course?
The controller that you were dealing with now is one that handles the whole course.
Holds the whole course. Now, in the, in the letter, and it says that this particular device by Campbell Scientific, Wesco Turf is the sole provider of this equipment? Is this not a common piece of equipment that's used on courses, or?
No, Wesco Turf is just the distributor for Toro, so basically Toro and Rainbird are the two major irrigation companies in the business for golf. So when, when they say that it's a sole source, what it really means is just to get this Toro component that matches up with the Toro system, the distributor for this area is Wesco Turf.
Okay.
So if you went to, say, Tallahassee, they would have a different distributor of the same, you know, of the same product, of the same product. And, you know, apples to apples, this, this piece compared to a Rainbird piece is similar in price, you know, within 10 or 15% of the price, so, you know, as we get into the bigger picture, when we start looking at the nines and so forth, I mean, we'll be getting competitive bidding for, for those projects as they get bigger, but this is a little bit of a, really, it's just, it was accelerated by the fact that we're having to move our, you know, move our situation temporarily away from our current location and then back.
Okay. Well, then the other thing I had here, and it's just, like I said, it's just more from my education, it's a proprietary software, they're the only ones that can support this?
Yes, well, in other words, you know, Toro, for their system, only has one company that, that does their work, and so that's why it's a proprietary software. Every, I mean, you somewhat, you're tied in once you make, I guess it's, maybe it's a bad comparison, but if you bought a $200,000 carrier air conditioner, you're pretty much tied into carrier for parts and so forth, and sometimes you have other companies that, you know, make replacement parts, but this is, you know, basically, you're, you're going to be supported by Toro when you're doing this system.
So if we need support in the software side of this, who do we go to? Do we go to Wesco Turf, and then they provide somebody to us, so we're locked into these people forever, basically? I'm just trying to get it...
No, I mean, basically, now, I can't tell you how long Wesco's been around, but I've been down here 30 years, and they've been down here all 30 years, and they're, you know, very reputable, it's, you know, a big industry, but I do, I understand your concern.
My only concern is sometimes, you know, when you get into proprietary things, you're locked into that particular vendor or that support organization, and they can kind of call it any way they want, so that's why I was concerned.
And that is, that is a very valid concern, I think, and I don't think, what they know, and it's a lot with equipment, is the, the superintendents are a very close-knit group, so if you had a company that basically started to not support their systems, started to overcharge their systems, you know, then you would, everybody would be leaving Toro and going to Rainbird, you know, for their irrigation, and it's, those two companies are a lot like easygoing club car, where one, one doesn't let the other get too, you know, doesn't let the other get too far ahead, so the competition does work well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mike?
Yeah, I...
Don't, don't run off for a second.
I, I agree that this has to be done, I've talked to Tanya, I've talked to Jim, I maybe respectfully disagree with Jim a little on this snuck up on us, and I think this is another one of our, but we have to fix it, so I'm, I'm in full support of this, so we just get through this.
Okay. Jim, I have one question, and I know David did this, not you, but it does concern me. This unit is 12,800. As I understand it, the sensor is another, what, almost 5,000? That you would add to it later on, possibly?
For the weather station?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and David had budgeted for 10,000 total, if I remember right in the budget. How did he miss it that far?
The weather station was never part of the original, part of the original budget, as far as that goes, but he, I don't think he did the due diligence in researching the contract to miss it from 10,000 to 13,000.
Okay.
The extra station that you can, at least it, it entertains me that once someone leaves, you know, people go from the Chevy to the Cadillac or from, however you want to try to upgrade it, so I think it was just an effort, you know, on the part of the person who picked up the ball to, oh, wouldn't it be nice to have this extra luxury, which will be nice down the road, but it really is, the weather station is a luxury.
Yeah, but, you know, I think we talked about it in the budget thing, that the weather station will save us quite a bit of, of water, in the fact that when it, when it's raining, we don't have to water.
Oh, definitely.
And in my opinion, that is something that eventually we need to add on to it, there's no doubt in my mind, so. Any other board discussion? Public comment? Boy, you're quiet today. Back to the board. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President White?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go back to see that I skipped a minute ago, sorry about that. Excuse me, a resolution number 2016-11/18-53. A resolution of Southern Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve a contract change order for a time extension of 30 days to Daleman Real Estate Development Corporation for blower installation project from November the 25th till December the 26th, 2016. I need a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
And a second?
Second, yeah.
Okay, public comment?
Why are we, why are we doing this? Why are we extending it?
The electrical transformer for this project is not scheduled to be shipped until November 30th, and, and the supplier, I'm not real sure, I don't have the supplier's name in front of me today, I apologize, but the transformer for that project is the delay in the 30-day extension.
They just didn't order it in time, or just...
I don't know if they didn't order in time, if there was a manufacturing, you know, number of weeks that they, by the time they ordered it, it could have been a six to eight to 12-week manufacturing period, so...
I think it's just a long time out. I think they got it ordered as soon as they got the contract, I believe.
They did.
Any more board comment? Mark? Molly? Okay. Public comment? Back to the board. Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President White?
Yes.
Okay, move on to number E. A resolution number 2016-11/18-55. A resolution of Southern Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve the purchase of four John Deere Gators and a tractor under state contract for golf course budgeted in the general fund. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Mike, you want to comment on this just a second before we get into discussion, or, okay, Omar?
So this resolution's for the golf capital items, we've gone out and got state contract pricing on these five items, four Gators and one tractor. The original budget for these five items was 56,000, the total purchase price is going to be 53, so we're coming in under budget. They are over the $5,000 threshold, which requires three bids, or three quotes, but because we're doing state contract pricing, that eliminates that requirement.
Okay, I talked to, go ahead, public comment, excuse me, public comment, board comment, Mark, you got anything?
I did.
Molly? I talked to you a minute, and you told me yesterday that you were going to see if they would take the Gators or excess Gators, some of them in, in addition to this, is that correct?
Yes, so we've reached out to Jacobson and to John Deere, we're waiting on the answer back, to see what kind of trade-in values we'll get for our current Gators as well as our mowers. As soon as we get that information, I'll definitely...
So that would come off...
It's going to be a separate transaction, we're going to buy these first, and then we'll go down the avenue into either trading them in or sending them off to auction, it'll be, you guys can have that, that choice.
Right, we're doing a complete inventory right now of, and then physically going out and, and writing every piece of equipment down and the condition levels of the equipment that we currently have. So, and we, I mean, we've kept an inventory in, in the accounting office, you know, since, since I've been involved here at the district, but this is a actual physical inspection of our, of our equipment, so any, any items for surplus we'll bring to you, and then, and then, of course, we would, you know, work on trading some of those in.
Okay, thank you.
On that inventory, are we doing the full organization, in other words, golf operations as well?
Yeah.
So everything is going to be inventoried?
Everything coming out of that maintenance building is going to be inventoried.
Good, public comment?
I would like a clear explanation as to why, if there's something available on the state contract, that eliminates the district's responsibility of checking to make sure that the prices that they're purchasing on are the most competitive. How does that legally eliminate our requirement to check pricing? The county has a policy of giving local vendors a 5% advantage by virtue of the fact that they're local, and Mike has already demonstrated that he was able to buy a truck locally that was available for less money than the state contract. I think Kurt, in his previous status on the board, found the same thing with some other commodities, that a little bit of checking around sometimes can be a surprise. And I think it's the district's fiduciary responsibility, when they're spending taxpayer money, to get the best price available. I don't think it's that difficult, especially if we're doing our diligence about maintaining a bidder's list that we do on a regular basis, as the county does. They have a acceptable bidder's list for all different commodities... They have a acceptable bidder's list for all different commodities and services. Uh, whenever a job is put in the paper, advertising for bid, they send out an announcement to their acceptable bidders for those particular products and services, to let them know that there's a project that's being bid. And they expect to be advised by those acceptable bidders on their list, whether or not, if it's, if they're not going to bid, after a period of time of no bids coming back, they purge the list. And I, I think we've got the same thing, similar, in our district policy manual, that we, our, our, our financial department does maintain a list of suppliers that can be used by employees to get competitive pricing, to assure that we're getting the best price available. Can anybody explain to me, from a legal standpoint, why it's okay? Simply because there's a piggyback, a contract? For instance, the, uh, the paving that we had done on the Frontage Road was based on a pricing of a piggyback contract that was placed 18 months previously with Avon Park. And that evidently put us in a position, in our minds, where we didn't have to get competitive pricing. Can I have an explanation on that, please?
It's an exemption from the bidding, the bidding process. If there's a, if products can be obtained through a state, state contract, they're exempt from the RFP, from the competitive bidding process.
So that satisfies the fiduciary responsibility of the district and the policy of getting the best competitive price available? We simply go to the other source and not check pricing?
Well, I mean, I don't know whether or not there, there's no requirement to check pricing.
There's no requirement. Not even to the taxpayers of the district?
Well, I mean-
Okay, thank you.
Any other, thank you, Tom. Any other public comment? Back to the board. Chrissy, you want to call the roll?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President White?
Yes. Resolution number 2016 dash 11 slash 18 dash 56, excuse me, a resolution of Sunland Lake Sebring Improvement District to purchase two groundmaster mowers, Toro groundmaster mowers, for a price of 41,673.29, under state contract for the Road and Drainage Department budget in the general budget fund. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Omar, I think you've worked on this too.
So this is one enclosed four-wheel-drive mower for the Roads Department. Um, once again, it's similar to the golf capital items. This is for the Roads and Drainage Department. We've gone out as well and stuck with state contract pricing, just to be consistent, which eliminates, again, the, the competitive bidding process. Pricing came in at 41,673.29. The budget for this item was 42,000, so it came in under budget.
Okay. Comment from the board?
There's, I see a two-year warranty for, or an hourly 1,500 hours, I believe, it is. Is that an either or, first of all?
Whichever comes first.
Whichever comes first. So approximately, do we have a feel for how many hours, excuse me, can we put on this mower in a given year?
Uh, I don't know.
I mean, I'm just trying to get a feel for it. Is this going to wear out in a year?
You know, I'm going to tell you, yes, because I don't know, but I'll find out.
What, what should, what do you think in the life span? This, this is basically what he's looking for.
Well, the one we have right now, um, three years? No, four years, that was, uh, the one that's similar to this is four years right now. So, uh, of course, it's the way it's maintained. Um, and George maintains his, uh, equipment, uh, daily, so, I mean, he, he keeps up on that.
Yes, as part of this as well, the Roads Department has one enclosed mower and an open. The utility department has been in need of a, of a mower to keep their plants well-cap to maintain, so we're going to transfer one of those road, uh, mowers into the utility department and then give them the new mower.
Okay, so the least-used mower will be transferred over?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Any other comment? Uh, Omar, I think Tom made a, a pretty good comment a minute ago about checking with local and a-
Yeah, I have no problem. I, I am for it all the way. I'm, I'm willing to go out and get prices. I think there was some confusion or some, you know, there were some questions last time we brought the, uh, the local vendor. There was some people on both sides of the fence, they were unpleased that we went out and got local pricing, and then some were in favor of it. So whichever way you guys decide to go, I'm, I'm more than forward to go and find the best pricing that we can for the district.
Get us a state next, and, and a local vote, I think.
Yeah, I'll get you three every time. If you want, that's fine with me.
All of our benefit.
I mean, I noticed this went through Wesco Turf as well.
Yeah, once again, it's state contract pricing, so, um, they are the authorized dealer for Toro. Anything, if you go to the Toro website, and I showed, uh, David a copy of it, you type in anything in any area code, and Wesco Turf is the only one that comes out authorized for Toro. So if you're wanting a Toro piece of equipment, you're going to go through Wesco Turf.
Okay. Public comment on this, uh, groundmaster mower?
Bill Norcross, resident. I just want a little clarification, Omar, because I'm looking at the, the numbers up there, you know, it doesn't make any sense to a, just a novice looking at things like this. This is, you know, you've got a, you've got a, a cost of a machine that's 47,000, you've got a $21 discount? Or is that a percent? Then you have a price of $37,000, and the actual net price is $41,000. So it's a little confusing, maybe you can clarify it. Thank you.
So right, and the discount looks like it seems to be a 21%, and then the 41 comes out to be the cumulative total of all the items priced on the, on the side. So the 37 plus the 20, 29 plus the 230 plus the 600.
Gentleman in the green shirt, back here. Have your hand up.
Wes Tanner, resident. I think it's been clarified, he said he's going to start getting other bids. I was all, when I was in business, I always liked to have multiple, multiple bids too, to show prices that you're actually getting for product, but it looks like he's going to get that now. I was just curious, I'm not familiar with what, uh, you'd call them state contract pricing, because I always like to see at least three bids to keep her, not that they wouldn't be honest, but it lets you know you're getting a good product and the best price. So what is state contracting? If someone could explain that to me, pricing?
So state contract pricing is, is pretty similar to our competitive bidding process. The state puts out items for bid, and any company in the state of Florida can go out and bid on that item. Whoever comes in lowest gets the bid, and that's, you're, you're typically not going to find it cheaper. We've run into the case where, by chance, we have, um, I'm going to say that's probably not common, but I'll go out and get prices to make sure that we are getting the best price. I have no problem with that.
This is a state, this is a state of Florida program, so when we talk about state contract pricing, this is a state of Florida. It could be on any type of product. It could be mowers, it could be refrigerators, I mean, it's a state of Florida-
I just like to see multiple bids, that's what I like to see.
Omar's right, it's not typical to find a product lower than state contract pricing.
The only time that I know of that we beat it was on an automobile, and I think that was due to rebates rather than anything else, so. Back to the board. Any other comment? Uh, Chrissy, call the roll, please.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President White?
Yes. Resolution number 2016 dash 11 slash 18 dash 57, a resolution, Sunland Lake Improvement District to approve a budget amendment number one to the 2017 budget to carry forward project costs for certain capital projects not completed during the 2015 and 2016 physical years. Need a motion, please.
Your boys are a little quiet there. Omar, I know this is just a formality.
Yeah, these are just projects that we started. It's the playground, it's the blower project, which is still under process, the emergency generator we put in the PO to, to put down a down payment, it just came in this year, so we're going to go ahead and finish out, but we need to transfer that allocated money that we didn't use in the last budget to this budget, so we can finish paying, paying these projects off. Um, the Northeast Strange Basin, on its last draw, was just completed, so we're going to go ahead and submit that for final payment. Um, other than that, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the board? Public comment? Edgell?
Edgell Elliott, residents. Just for clarification, I don't know if you've got $15,000 for a project in last year's budget, but it's not completed this year, until this year, and that money's still available? Does it need to come back up for resolution to continue it forward?
It's not in a, it's not in the budget for this year, so-
It's in last year's-
It was in last year's budget, so last year's budget cuts off, the new adopted budget comes into play.
Your money's only good for one year, period.
For certain line items, yes.
It's strictly an accounting thing?
It's an accounting thing, it's a-
And I'm dealing from the federal budget. We had one year of live for most appropriations, and then you had four years to finish executing. So if I bid for, or if we did something for $15,000 when the one-year appropriation was live, even though it took three years later to complete it, we did not have to go back and reallocate funds, unless it exceeded that original amount.
Well, we're not reallocating new funds, it's the same funds that were sitting out there before.
But I didn't have to go back and re-approve it, once said. I don't, I don't know why you have to go back and re-approve things that have already been approved even in the previous year. You're going to re-approve the, the maintenance building, it's not going to be approved or finished this year. Will you have to go back each year and continue to approve funds from the previous year to finish it?
Yes.
Well, Edgell, I understand where you're coming from, I've worked under the same budget process. But some of these things, we've asked the, the people in, in the administration to keep us in touch of what's going on. We want to know what's going on, and this kind of leans into that too, you know, because we get the questions from the public. And, but I, I know where you're coming from, we, we had a practice of four years, just like you did, but that, this is really ministerial, it's, it's the administration moving the money alone.
It, it doesn't, uh-
Yeah.
It seems like it's a whole lot of administrative burden to you that's unnecessary.
Yeah. I had to be, to understand yourself.
Okay. Public, any other public comment? Back to the board. Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President White?
Yes. Discussion of, of the Don Bell signs. Now, if I can get everything together in one spot here. Now, can't find my sign, please. Okay, I know what's in here somewhere. Okay, I've set it someplace, but I can't find it.
Chrissy's going to bring you-
It's on the back?
Yes.
That's the sheet I'm looking for. That's the sheet I'm looking for. I think I set mine out. Um, you want to go, what, go through them one at a time, guys? That's the easy way, isn't it?
That's up to you, I, I just have a question on one of them, so.
Okay, let's pick up, let's pick up the one you have a question on.
Uh, number eight. I, I talked to Tanya about that one, and it's-
And still by.
And, uh, it's, it's the one that's going to be over there by, I guess, the driving range, or, I, I couldn't figure out where it was going to be, but I-
It's going to be-
I, I kind of looked at it and looked at the signs we have, and I, I wouldn't be, even though it's the most expensive one, and that's not the reason, I just don't think we need it.
Okay.
That's about as simple as I can get it.
Well, I would have drove around and, and we started to roll out and everything, and we do have a sign, that's what he's talking about, over there already, Del.
We do. Yes.
It's a small one.
Don Bell created the idea of placing a very large sign. It would be right in front of the, there's a flower bed or an area before you get to the snack shack. And they, they had created that idea as part of all the signs that they designed. So if this is a sign that you don't want to entertain, it's fine, it's, we just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, well, I, I could, I could see the need for that one, and, and much like Mike, it wasn't because it was the most expensive, but it did, guess why not? The, the one that I've been harping about for a while, I believe this was, uh, the first one, sheet 4A, that sign, would that go within that interchange of Pont St. Leon, that we can bend the north entrance?
It goes along Pont St. Leon. Along.
The number four sign will be on Pont St. Leon, so if you're pulling up to the first circle and you're on Ponce, that sign will direct you to the right for the community.
In the circle?
No, I don't think so.
You're, you're, you're coming in the north entrance on Ponce, and you go by the-
Two sides all the way down through-
Correct. So as you approach the circle, and when you're on Ponce, this sign will be there to, to direct you to the clubhouse.
To the right-hand side of the street or something.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Is that in front of the-
Correct.
In front of the church, I think.
In front of the church.
Church.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that, that's one sign, we don't want.
Mark, you got?
No, I, I knew that, I had already driven around and looked at these.
I got a couple of comments. Uh, I don't know how you guys feel about number six, which is the district office It's not a ton of money, well, it's, yeah, it is, it's $3,300. I'm in favor of eliminating that sign for a while. You know, we've got a, a sign out in front right now that says District Office, and if we're going to move it, if we're going to do something in the next couple of years, there's no sense of putting a, a sign out, and, and if we're, if we're going to do something, I really would like to have a nicer-looking sign than what's listed here. But, uh, from my standpoint, and I don't know how you guys feel, but I could put an X over that sign in front of the district office sign here for $3,300 without any trouble.
I think in the rotary there, or in the, whatever they call it down here, the turnabout, turn around, whatever.
This sign goes back to the office.
But I'm saying, there's already a sign there for the district office. To have another one, a hundred, being at 200 feet, I'm not quite sure-
This one just goes in front of it, so.
Why we would do that.
Okay. Okay, I got one other one.
So I'm in agreement with you, I guess, on that one.
Okay. I got one other one, and maybe it doesn't make any difference. It doesn't look like it makes any difference in the cost, but sign number 19 at Edgewater and Sunrise, it's a two-sided sign, and if you're back in Manor Hill, you surely know how to get to the pool or whatever, don't you? But it doesn't look like it changes the cost.
19, you referring to?
Yes, number 19, it's at Edgewater and, and Sunrise, which would be right at the corner, as you're coming down, be across from the, where that lift station is, right as you turn onto Edgewater.
Correct.
But it's a two-sided sign, so it actually would face back into Manor Hill and would face to the north, face north and south there, as I understand it, along the road.
Mr. President, you're just saying that it's not necessary to have the other side.
Yeah, and, and I, it doesn't look like it changes the cost, because the next one's a one-sided sign.
But that, when I looked at that, I said, if it is exactly the same cost, why not get the benefit of, from a two-sided sign? That's why I didn't isolate it.
Okay. Uh, okay, we're going to, is it an agreement then to eliminate- Okay, we're going to, is it an agreement then to eliminate six and eight?
Eight and six.
Okay.
Is that 1992 and not 33?
Yeah, $6,092.
Yeah, 1992.
Larry, you had mentioned $3,000, it's 1992.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay.
But yeah, I'd certainly be in favor of eliminating, that's $7,000.
Seven, yeah, $7,000 eliminated, so, basically. Okay. The rest of them, then, stays?
Just for clarification, for me to help me out. The entrance to Turtle, that's number eight.
Right.
Okay, that's a $5,000 sign.
Right.
Oh, okay.
That's Deer Run and Turtle.
Mm-hmm, yes. I just wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah. Now, the way that this is set up, it actually brings them into Turtle, coming into the sandbox and then splits it. And out of the big book, I don't know, part of you, I don't know if they even have the big book, but in Don Bell's original program, there is a thing, if we wanna add it, that has the Turtle Run and the Deer Run, it's in big aluminum letters, and the Deer Run would be out about where the tee box is on number one, and it's two foot, like aluminum letters, and on Turtle it would be down where the brace is, just past where you turn in to go into the, where the sandbox is.
Yeah.
And so, that's the reason to take them clear down there and turn them in, rather than turn them in on Bonnie. And that way, it'll never have to be moved again.
Okay. I actually drove around, kinda looked at where all of these signs were going, maybe I missed some of them. When I spoke with Tanya the other day, she had indicated maybe we, if there's any confusion, we'll go out and look at them.
If you want to, we'll go out right after the meeting and go take a look, just exactly where it needs to go, that we have a question about.
What do you think? Are you comfortable with where they're all going right now?
Well, I looked at them, and I was okay, I was just more concerned about one or two of the bigger signs.
I've got time to do it, you guys do.
I'm all right with, like, Mark, I went around and looked where they go and so forth, and the panels and so forth.
I think the issue currently is, when you hit the second entrance of Bonnie Drive, that's where you take the right and you go into number one.
Right.
And there's a little turtle on the ground that takes you to the right.
Correct.
And members and the public and everyone should be using that entrance. You know, at the second entrance of Bonnie, you make a right onto Bonnie, off of Sunland Le, I'm sorry, off of Columbus, onto Bonnie, and then it takes you into number one on Turtle. The, your thought process was to take...
Take them on down.
Take them straight.
It's not gonna change the members, you know they're gonna turn on Bonnie anyway.
Yeah.
But what it would do is just take the, take the non-members on down to where the sandbox is, and then bring them in and split them, and that way, when the new sign goes in, if we ever put it in, that big sign, we're already there, we don't have to change anything. All the members and people that know their way around is gonna cut on Bonnie anyway.
Yeah, we're gonna do that. I never thought of that, but that's...
I believe that was the original idea when they built that cart path. You know, how the cart path, it's a multi-use path, actually, it's a very wide path.
Right.
It takes you straight instead of, it takes you on around to the sandery.
There'd be a sign then, we have one sign then on, right at the first entrance of Bonnie that sends you straight, and one on the second entrance that sends you straight. And then that path automatically turns in towards the sandbox, so you don't need anything there.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I don't know about these guys.
If everybody is, we don't need to go out, but if we're not, we need to go out and take a look at them.
Hold on a second, let me just check something here, bear with me, appreciate it. I thought, I guess I'm right, I thought we were initially going to have a sign that pointed down Columbus, with a straight arrow. People could utilize that path, or a sign that went to the right onto Bonnie, and they would travel down off of the main road, off of Columbus. Because a lot of people will be traveling down Columbus, doesn't it make a little more sense for them to take a right as soon as they can and get them off the main thoroughfare there?
Well, they're on the sidewalk, they're on that...
But they don't go on the sidewalk, that's by your property on the sidewalk, they don't... I don't ever see any people driving down the multipurpose drive.
The signs will take them down.
No, you don't, they're either on Columbus, now that is an option, I don't know, Jim, if you wanna weigh in on that, but that is definitely an option to take golf carts down Bonnie, but I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's definitely an option.
I was under the impression that they were gonna have...
Oh, on the first.
Either or type of the thing, people could take a right, it's still going to lead to the first tee.
It will, yes.
And if they go further down on Columbus and take a right onto Bonnie, it'll lead to the first tee. I don't know if it's a, from a safety standpoint, Mr. Security.
I agree with you, Mark. You know, to get them off the road, I mean, we get a lot of complaints with people driving down Columbus, you know, it slows everybody down, if we can split it, it's better, because there's less traffic.
Plus, you have, I mean, I hate to say it, you have people coming down Columbus, and there's a stream of golf carts, and cars behind there, they get anxious, and they pull out, and they have to accelerate to pass, I mean, just a thought.
Well, I know from living on Bonnie, that I certainly see all the traffic, and it seems like it is a safety issue that people come in through Bonnie, and I remember before I even lived over, that's, I went that way, because there wasn't any traffic. But the only time I really see the traffic is eight o'clock in the morning, one o'clock in the afternoon. That's when you got it. I saw that, I'm telling you, it's a non-issue.
Well, if you live there and you see it all the time, then you're probably better.
Well, I mean, you know, in the evening, when people come in, dark, they come down the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yeah. But it...
Well, do you wanna change it and take it over to Bonnie, or do you wanna run down the sidewalk?
I just don't see, I know what Mark's talking about, and with Mike on the safety issue and so forth like that, but I kinda think it's a non-issue, to tell you the truth, one way or the other.
I know that, I know that a good chunk of our people will use Bonnie.
They, you see, I'll tell you what, you can tell right off the bat, the black carts go down Columbus, and the green, red, and purple ones go down Bonnie.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
If you're comfortable, we'll leave it like it is. Okay.
Good morning again, Bill Norcross, resident, and member of the Golf Committee. I understand the sign values, and we have enough signs going up and down Sunland Boulevard, but you know, when you have the correct signs, which I think you're headed for the right direction, that is valuable. And I think that having a sign on both ends of Bonnie, first sign, first tee, take a right, that would divert at least half the traffic, and at the end, you would have one and ten. So, I mean, that makes some kind of sense. And signs are sometimes a favorite subject with me. You're dropping the sign on the front of the district, and that money, three odd thousand dollars, would go a long way to fix up the scoreboard, which is falling apart, and nobody wants to hear it, because I've lobbied for this for quite a while, but this is a proper venue. And to me, you know, have another sign on the street, okay, fine, but you know, in the area which we have scoring facilities, that area is falling apart. I have mentioned to several supervisors here, and also Mr. Maintenance over there, Mike, and they all agree that it should be done, some improvements, because the floorboards are falling apart, and the golf pros need a more area, a larger area, circle area, and elevated, so they can keep score and won't have people all over their back. Okay, that's just a simple little project. We're spending thousands and thousands of dollars here doing other projects, I understand that, and they have to be done. But this little project seems to be kinda like, oh, we're gonna put it off, we're gonna put it up. And I think it should be included in part of the sign deal that you have. I appreciate if you really consider taking care of something like that, which I think is pertinent, and it helps advertising.
Okay. That needs to come through the Golf Committee, then come before the Board, so...
Well, we're talking about it right now, but how do you people feel about something like that? I'm asking a direct question to you right now. Should we drop the matter? I'm not gonna lobby for this anymore, I've done it. I just think it's a good viable little project that helps to identify our Sunland Lake area. And when we have visitors coming in, I think it's more important than adding another sign for the district, or add another sign on Sunland Boulevard, so...
We're basically discussing the bell signs that we have now. So, we need to, does it need fixed? Yes, I think probably the Board agrees it needs some attention, but it's not gonna be in this bunch of signs right now.
Okay, can we budget for something like that in the future?
Probably next year's budget, someplace.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Maybe you can talk Jim out of that money, I don't know.
Tom Coste, resident again. In the past, we, this issue of multipurpose paths has come up, and somebody was gonna check into it last year when we were talking about the potential of a cart path on Pont St. Leon for cart, golf cart traffic. A multipurpose cart path, according to the state statute, is one which allows pedestrian, walking, traffic, and golf cart traffic, or self-propelled vehicle traffic. That path on Columbus is not wide enough to be considered a multipurpose cart path.
Understand.
And there's people out walking in the morning on that path when the shotguns are going out. It's happened quite often. I think we oughta be considering widening that path, and I'm not sure that we should even be directing golf cart traffic onto that path, because it's not wide enough to accommodate somebody walking and also a golf cart. The other thing to keep in mind, it wasn't that long ago that we actually had somebody who was running for the Board, and he's a resident here, that got very irate every time he went out in the morning, and all that golf cart traffic was on Columbus. And it's a dangerous situation, because some carts go faster than others, and some of the guys are prone to pulling out into the oncoming lane in order to pass a slower golf cart on the way to their tee box. So, and this gentleman actually threatened to deliver the next golf cart that got in front of his truck, he was gonna deliver to Town Hall on his front bumper. And that's, that should be in the minutes of one of these board meetings that took place in the last two or three years. So I just bring that up when we're talking about where to place golf, cart path signs on Columbus. Keep that in mind, because it's a safety issue.
Okay, thank you. Do we wanna go take a quick look at that before we make the final decision on signs afterwards?
Might as well.
Let's go take a...
If it would make a few of these people happy, yeah?
Let's go take a look at it, before, instead of journey, we'll go take a look at it.
Yeah.
And take Chrissy with us, so she can take the notes. Is that, is that satisfactory, David?
Yeah, I mean, you can do that if you want, but this right now, honestly, this is just a discussion item, we're not voting on anything. We, I mean, if you, so, I think what the plan is, is to, once you make a decision, bring it back as a resolution on what we're gonna go, you know, bid out for contract.
Okay, okay. I'll go along with that.
David, can we collectively go out there without violating the side channel?
As long as you, I mean, if you're just viewing stuff, you're not discussing anything, yeah.
Just viewing.
Or, and if you want to, we can, just like the President said, we can recess, or not necessarily recess, but just adjourn from this location, and take Chrissy with you, and take notes, and invite all of the public that we're gonna go do that. But I think the easiest thing would be to just, if you wanna go review it between now and the next meeting, we'll be having a resolution come forward.
Okay, that's fine.
Probably the easiest and best way to do it.
We can go in, review it individually then.
And I can go with you as well, I'll go with you individually. Can I ask a quick question? The public, when the public plays golf, they do drive down Columbus, is that correct?
I don't know.
Okay, which is correct, because the, it's actually just a sidewalk, it's not a multi-use path, and I didn't, I didn't think that there, I had never seen golf carts on it, I thought they actually took Columbus. And the members also take Columbus, right? Or maybe sometimes Bonnie, it just depends? Okay, I just wanted to...
But Tom's right, that isn't wide enough, the golf, you put your golf cart on there, you have a foot on each side, I'd say, it's about all you have. But at eight and at one, and I can see why that would make someone mad, it's a matter I should have to do there, and whoever's got the fastest cart gets there first, that's the way it is.
Thanks.
He's right. And Bill's resolution too, I'm gonna take that up at budget time, because I've looked at it, that, but that's a later thing.
Yes, we've all looked at that thing.
Yeah, it'll be in next year's budget.
Okay.
But I would rather myself to go down and look at that, and then come back when we're making our decisions.
Okay. Good enough.
Mr. President, sorry. Jim Kurtz, foreign general manager, Sunland Golf Club. Since we won't be adjourning and the supervisors will be looking at it individually, one of the things that's coming up on our capital budget, that I think would be considered in this, is the restrooms that we're looking to do on Turtle Run, because I think that'll be vital into how you might want to route the traffic. So we wanna look at that and consider where those restrooms are gonna be located, because if you did route them down Bonnie, you know, you would probably locate the restrooms possibly in a different spot than if you route them down Columbus, so it's just something to consider. And on a separate issue, just on the scoreboard, the Golf Committee is aware of the need of the scoreboard, and is planning on fixing the scoreboard based on funding. The topic came up after the fund, you know, after this year's fiscal budget was made, so that it couldn't be part of this year's fiscal budget, but, you know, based on our performance, we'll look at it next summer, if our performance is good through this season, and if our performance, you know, doesn't exceed how we have in the past, then we'll incorporate it into next year's budget. But there's no question in my mind, or from the committee, that that whole board needs to be redone, and, you know, my thought process is, I wanna do it right, and have the right funds to do it, and make a good presentation, instead of spending, you know, half of the money that might be available now, and just kinda band-aiding it. So, but it is, it is on our list, and it does need to be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, move on to add-on items? I think we've...
None, no.
None?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Petitions and deverications. Avon Park School, gonna fall in this?
Yes, sir.
And I think we have a letter, too.
The Avon Park High School is requesting the use of the community center for their prom on Saturday, April 1st, 2017. They have reserved this currently. Can you, can you speak to the fees? I don't know any information. Okay. Tenille's gonna update you real quick on that. The fees for them would be what we would charge any resident, which for that many people would be $225.
How much?
$225.
Okay.
And that's to have up to 200 people.
And what are they asking for, I mean, other than, I mean...
They're asking if we would waive the fees. I believe they have paid the deposit to reserve the space. Yes, correct. Okay, they have paid their deposit.
They have to do it. How much is the deposit, then?
The deposit's $250.
Okay, in addition, then to $225 rent, is what we would normally charge. Of course, the... Of course, the deposit comes back as long as it's kept...
Correct.
Okay, did you say that was up to 200 people?
Yes. And I have explained, and I made sure they understood, that no more than 200 people could be, and they... Because I questioned that there would be more than 200 people.
How do you police something like that? You're gonna just limit the tickets and say the first 200 people can come?
Well, I guess they... I mean, they're familiar with how many people come to their proms, and they're pretty confident they're gonna stay under that number, so...
Did they... I'm sure they have their own chaperones and whatever. Do they have any other security thing that they bring, or...
Yes, they'll also have officers. Typically, the resource officer and a couple extra officers will be present.
And will we have security? Mike, your organization, will they be also involved in this, or...
No.
You won't staff any of this?
No. No, we usually don't handle anything like, you know, a private... They hire their own.
What do we do about... I've got a few questions about this. What do we do about the parking? Those kids all bring cars to the prom. Can we handle all those cars out here?
Two hundred.
This says the community we're talking about here.
Yeah, I mean, we have weddings in here frequently that have up to 200 people. I think that it would be no problem for us to handle the number of cars.
Tanil, where have they held this in years past?
I know that there is a location in Avon Park. I'm not as familiar with the venues in Avon Park as I am in Sebring, but I know that the venue that they had been using, I think they used a church one year, but they said it's not available for the weekend, they only have certain times they can do it, and they're just not able to have it there this year.
Well, I guess I have mixed emotions about it. If you give it to the Avon Park High School, who else are you gonna have to give it to? And, you know, I feel badly about saying no, too, but... But you guys... But kind of the whole opinion, I guess.
I would... I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Okay.
Tanil, you said it was two and a quarter, $225 for the rental? And they're looking to waive that whole rental fee?
Yes. Well, we, typically, in the past, if we waive a rental fee, we do still charge them a cleaning fee, because we do clean up. They're required to do some sort of cleanup, but we, you know, come in and deep clean after every event.
Okay. I guess I have a little bit of mixed emotions. I certainly would love to see us support the prom, but I'm also concerned that how many other people will come to us. And I know David in the past says, this doesn't set a precedent, but it does set an image that if you allow some groups to come here and other groups not, it could create a little bit of a problem. I would tend to believe that they should pay the fee. That's just my thought process.
Okay.
I agree. I didn't know where to go next. The school system certainly collects enough of our taxes to pay for these things, so I... You know, there is gonna be a cost to us. Someone's gotta pay for those lights up there and the damage they do and stuff like that. But I think it does set some type of precedence if we wanna let... Give it away. I'm in favor of making a pay.
Make that four in a row, so go ahead and tell them that we will not waive the fee.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a letter from Robert Ellison. You see it present today? Nope. Do... Mike, you wanna... Jim, do you wanna cover this, or Tanja, you wanna just read it, or what?
I can give you a summary.
Just summary. Just summarize it, I guess, would be good.
Robert and Karen Ellison. We received a letter from them on Wednesday evening. They purchased a new home here, or a condo, I'm not sure which, here in the district, and they did have a previous golf membership here at the district of a one-month membership. He is requesting that the board consider him for the one-year free membership as part of the new home-buying program here in the district. The program was developed that if you had a previous membership here in the district, you do not qualify for that program. We did not specify whether it was a one-month, or three-month, or five-month, or a full membership at the time. We just said, period. If you had a membership here prior, you do not qualify for the program. We no longer offer one-month memberships here in the district, but Mr. Ellison did have a one-month membership in 2015. Mr. Kurtzborn, he did deny his request for a free membership.
Okay, board discussion. It breaks the rules, do we wanna bend the rules?
Yeah. This actually was brought to my attention. I received a couple calls in reference to it. The board last year passed a resolution that essentially outlined anybody that had a membership, a previous membership, would not be eligible for the program. At the same time, we're trying to encourage people to move into this district. This particular individual came, got a monthly membership, they looked at it, they said, is this really the place I wanna retire? You know, and certainly with our declining membership, we need to be looking at ways of bringing people in. With that said, I believe that Jim and his organization essentially approached it in the proper way. They said there's a... They didn't say there's a resolution, but there is a resolution that says you can't do this.
Yes, right.
Where there's a little bit of a rub on this is we don't have a clearly defined set of guidelines or policy on memberships. We haven't... We don't have a formally defined guide on what a family membership is, whether people cohabitate together, is that, you know, a family membership? Do we have a membership that if somebody bought a... One of the cards, $65 or $69 cards, and then they continue to play, is that considered a membership? And more importantly, it would probably, I'm sure it was an oversight, and two wrongs don't make a right, but we did provide to another party a free membership when they had a previous membership in the club. Additionally, I think we need to look, and this is just my personal opinion, there's five people on the board, four right now. My personal opinion is we need to look at how all of this membership works. We have roughly $12,000 to $14,000 in free memberships, that's revenue that this club is losing, yet we're trying to fight to bring new members in. And I don't understand how we can grant, you know, free memberships unless there's some kind of return, and there might be some kind of return. I guess this has to be investigated. So if you wanna do... If you wanna do the right thing and you wanna adhere to what the resolution was, then we would have to deny this. But it's against my personal feelings with all of the other things that have happened.
I too would like to get together the supervisors and get this down on paper. So I agree with Mark, I kinda would vote in favor of giving this person a free membership, but I'm tired of us passing resolutions and always having special circumstances. I would like to sometime in the next three years that I'm on this board, that we have rules and they're black and white. They're answers yes or no. And it seems, I've been on here almost a year, and I have never in my life seen so many things come up that are just... I just... I really wanna get together, because I think it's ours to do, because we're the ones that are gonna face the music on what we do. But I would be in favor of giving this couple a free membership, but I want to get a set of rules on not... On a lot of things, and so our managers can say, yes, no, and we don't have to deal with it. I mean, it doesn't sound that hard, but we... I just, I know I'm going on and on, but we've had so dang many things that we didn't even know about, things were going on. We need to get this stuff writing and get it done and let our managers manage, because we're set the policy and let them do it. So, that's all I have.
Wally?
There's nothing much that I can add to what previous two supervisors have added, but this is kinda unique. We don't even have a one-month membership anymore. It's been my ideas since being on this board, I have certain priorities, and one of them is to bring more people into Sunland Lake. These people are here, someone told them, and it may not have been the right person. When I bought my new home, I thought I qualified, and so what I do, I went over to the board and checked, and I didn't qualify, so that's fine. It's like some of these other things that come up, people can't... Policy comes into effect here, where people get hurt or sick or something, they can't play golf, or we don't have that down on paper, how that works. Well, my granddaughter broke my finger and I couldn't play golf for 10 weeks, but I didn't go ask anybody for my money back. Jim did the right thing, he followed what policy he thought he needed to follow, but it just... I've thought more about this thing since I got that paper, since Chrissy sent that to me, than I think about anything we've had, because it's very important that we treat these people right. It's just... It's just not right to go out here and tell them, you play golf for a month and you give us whatever the amount of money it is, but when you move down here, forget about being on that list of getting a new membership, because you come down checking us out and paid money to do it. I'm in favor of giving it to them.
I am also. I think the board, when they set that up, simply didn't even think about the one month. If it was a three-month or a five-month, I would consider that probably going the other way, but on this one month, I'm in favor of going ahead and giving it to them. So, that answers. I think the majority voted that way, so...
Yeah. I have one thing I'd like to add, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
But I had a note on here, forgot to do it. I think it's imperative, when these people come in and get these memberships, new people come in, that they should be told at that time, now, look, if you get this three-month membership and you decide to stay here, now, you don't qualify for the yearly, you know, the yearly one. Make it official, that when they buy, they're told. And then this family, what they got into that, and somehow, wherever they go to put that check in for that month, well, no month anymore, or three months, or a year, they'd be told then, now, here's a plan we have, and be told, let them make the decision. We also have, as you're probably all aware, this resolution that was passed ends this year, 2016, so I'm sure the board will be tasked with a resolution to extend this and maybe with some modifications as to the actual resolution.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Go ahead.
Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sunland Golf Club. Relative to this, and I do agree, and obviously we all know that, at least I feel that we're in a tightening project at Sunland Golf Club. You know, whether it's our membership documents, whether it's our, you know, our HR, you name it, we're in the process of bringing up the standards, I think, at every part of our operation in getting things more documented. You know, things like the passing of a member, how that's handled relative to membership, the leave of absence, you know. I've been working with Tanya just the last week on developing a policy manual to handle those things. But I do wanna separate those, just when we look at this, is this, this is not something that has been occurring for years. It's a brand-new program that we put together, and when the resolution was drafted, this just wasn't considered. So I know we're looking at, you know, having an exception, but, you know, you look at big corporations that start all kinds of initiatives to do things, and the whole time they're going through the ad campaigns and they're going through the initiatives they're adjusting. So this is just an adjustment, in my mind, of something that we didn't foresee and didn't talk about. It was never even talked about, what about a one-month membership, or what about a three-month membership? So I guess what I would say, I don't feel like anybody did anything wrong, other than that they missed, you know, we missed talking about it, and that happens, you know, every day, all the time. And I think what resonates with all of us is this, Mr. Ellison's our target market. He did exactly what we wanted to have happen. You know, he came here, we had a membership, you know, process of 30 days that drew him in, he saw how great the place was, and he bought. He had a misunderstanding, and I agree with Wally, that, you know, it definitely needs to be part, right now, of sending out, you know, we really need to contact the people that we've even already signed up and tell them how we're gonna proceed for 2017, because we don't know if we're gonna have a program, but if we do have a program, we have the chance to craft it when we make it, whether we wanna include or exclude, you know, a three-month or any of those. So that was just the point. We have made a lot of mistakes, but I really don't think this was a mistake. I think it was just kind of an omission of not seeing it, and it's pretty much obvious to everybody who's looked at it that if we could go back and knew then what we knew now, we would have included the 30-day people. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tanya, anything else in petitions and communications?
No.
Okay. Move on to staff reports. Financial report, presentation. Omar?
So we provided the treasurer's report for September 30th, as well as the golf financials. I've come up with a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation for you guys to compile this information in a more user-friendly format, so we'll go through and we'll look at the general fund, utility fund, and golf fund individually. I've come up, you can follow along in the financial report or presentation. I wanna start off with revenues. First revenue is obviously assessments, that's our biggest chunk. This year, we collected a total of $33,148,113 in current year assessments, and $311,926 in prior year assessments. We missed budget by 2%, and some different factors as to why that happened. I did provide you with prior year. Last year, we only collected $3.3 million, just a little bit over $3.3 million in revenues. This year, we collected $3.4, which was an increase of $64,000. We've made an effort to try and go after some of the delinquent properties, primarily residents. Vacant lots, we really haven't touched much, but anyone that's over a year, delinquent, we're either sending them a notice internally, if they do not respond to our internal communication, then we send it off to the attorneys, and then we're either set up a payment arrangement or continue with the foreclosure process. I think this has really helped and increased revenues for assessments. Overall, total revenues, we didn't meet our budget and exceeded by 2%. We were over $68,000. Last year, we only collected total revenues of $3.7 million, over $3.7 million. This year, we collected over $3.8, which was also an increase of $62,000, over $62,000 this year over last year. Expenses, you can see here, all the expenses were under budget, you can see the 91%, 95, 99, going down the list. Excess revenues over expenditures were $164,632, so we didn't... We were under budget as far as our expenditures for normal operations. Reserve and contingencies come into play after. The $225,000 that I've highlighted here is the golf subsidy that we transferred out... that we transferred out. We budgeted for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, only transferred over two hundred and twenty-five. I did put the seventy-three thousand dollars and one seventy that came over from golf back to the general fund for the GPS dollar transfer. So that reduces the amount of subsidy that the general fund did provide this year. The golf capital, we spent two hundred and seventy-nine, a hundred and twenty-two dollars. We budgeted to spend three hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred, so we're under budget as that. Overall net change in fund balance, we were over prior-year fund, two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in the hole. We budgeted to use prior-year funds of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, which was an improvement. You can see here, I put some graphs on the bottom, which shows the majority of our revenues come from assessments, and then the majority of our expenses come from buildings and grounds and the roads department. I put here just a quick list of projects that we actually completed last year. You can see the basketball court, the pool furniture, the racket club restrooms were some of the big projects, the signage and landscape, phase-one project. So we were able to complete a lot of different projects and only used two hundred and twenty-nine thousand of prior-year fund balance. So next is the utility fund. You can see we exceeded total revenues by six percent. We had a hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase in revenues from last year to this year, which was an improvement. And then on expenses, we were under budget, we only met eighty percent of the budget that we had, but we did have an increase of a hundred and eighty-two thousand in expenses over last year, just based off some of the capital projects that we did as well in that, in that utility fund. Overall, pretty comparative. Financially, it looks about the same. This year, we had a negative forty-three thousand, last year was forty-two. So overall, operations really didn't fluctuate much, pretty consistent year over year. Once you take into consideration impact fees and investment earnings, we had a decrease of eleven thousand in investment earnings. We had one of our investments that kinda canceled out, and we received all the money last year, this year, that investment no longer exists, so we did have an eleven thousand dollar increase. Overall, net income loss, we almost broke even, it was a thousand dollars short overall in the utility fund. So the utility fund is operating well and taking care of itself. Last year, we had an increase, a positive income of ten thousand dollars, which is almost exactly that eleven thousand dollar swing in that investment income. These are some of the projects that we got done in the utility fund. We did the joint ceiling project, we did the unified drainage project in the ABC streets, we did the unit four pond and pump project, the northeast drainage basin project, and we did the blower purchase, and still almost broke even. Lastly, is the golf fund. I've highlighted some of the revenues here. Overall, gross revenues did increase by twenty, twenty thousand dollars. They also had an improvement in cost of sales, they reduced their cost of sales by thirty-seven thousand dollars. Overall, gross margin increased by fifty-seven thousand over last year's numbers. Operating expenses, you can see here, operating expenses totaled, did increase by a hundred and fifty-two thousand. The big hit was in payroll benefits and golf course maintenance, which I've highlighted there. Once again, the one hundred and fifty-two was a swing, they spent a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars this year over last year difference. Total operating net loss, three hundred and seventy-four thousand compared to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand last year. This number does not include the incentive, I've already backed that number out in this calculation, so there's a ninety-five thousand dollar swing from last year to this year. So here, I just wanna highlight again, once again, the recreational assessment from the golf, from the general fund to the golf was five hundred and four thousand. We reduced that by the GPS dollar transfers to get a total of four hundred and thirty-thousand dollars subsidy that came from the general fund to the golf fund. With, including that, general fund income, total loss came out to be a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, and compared to last year's net income of eight hundred and eight thousand Any questions?
I'd just like to comment on it. Thank you for putting it in a little easier format than we've had in the past, as well as, it's not an eye test, all those other reports, you know, small print. Is this gonna be something we're gonna see on a week, regular basis, once a month?
If you guys like, we could, I'm sure we can do it, it's no problem.
Quarterly?
It takes some time to put together, but it's something we could do quarterly, for sure.
How about quarterly?
How about quarterly?
Yeah, our, our reports as well, if you guys like any of the formatting that I've done on the presentation versus what you guys ever receive every month, I can change and come up with a new report that is easier for you guys to understand or read. You guys just kinda let me know what you're looking for.
Yeah, the other reports we receive are great, I mean, they're very, very detailed, but like I said, it's a little bit of an eye test, and it's, you spend several hours going through them, trying to figure out what's where, and how did it get there, so I like this format. Great job, anyway.
I like this too, Omar, and he said a couple hours to go through. When I first got on the board, it was a few days, because I had no clue, but I really liked this. Much easier to read, much easier to understand, know where we are.
Yeah, I'll look, I've heard some other comments too, on the way that our financials are reported. Just with it being our busy time right now, with assessments going out and auditors coming in for year-end, it's gonna be tough, but over the next few months, I'll definitely look at our reports, maybe changing the format, so it's easier to get a feel of what's going on.
Yeah, and you know, if something comes up, like what you're doing now with assessments and so forth, just y'all, we wait off, hold off till, you get time to do it.
Okay.
You know? I just had one question, I was looking at this the other day, on the golf memberships and everything, for, just for Jim, just a round figure, about memberships and course fees, it was two million dollars. What, what part of that would you estimate was green fees? Could you, could you break that out with one number?
For the question here, it's two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, what, what part of that two million is?
Our, our green fees last year were nine hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Almost half.
Half of it.
Yep, almost half. Any more comment? Omar, excellent presentation, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Omar.
Public comment?
Tom Coste, Omar, that report that we're generating every month, the detailed report, fifty-five or sixty pages, that's an automat, that's automatically created, is it not, by our software?
Those are different reports that we automatically pull from our systems.
Yeah, so it's not, I mean, if you do end up presenting to the board a concise report that, without all that detail, that report that we are getting would still be available, is that correct?
Correct. So the first two pages would be the concise report, and then if you wanna go and try and find some of the more detail, you can go further in.
Okay. I just, I kinda like to follow the money. That's really the only way you can really figure out what's really going on. Keyword search through that accounts payable listing, that's multiple pages, reveals a lot about where the money's going, who's it going to, whether, and how it ties back into the bottom line. And I know not a lot of people do that, but it's been very revealing to several of us over the past couple of years, and I'd really like to see that continue. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, move on to the golf report.
Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sun and Lake Golf Club. I'd like to start out by introducing Ramon Perez. Ramon, if you'll stand up. Ramon's our new Director of Golf Course Maintenance. Four days into the, into the job, he's always, already got it all figured out. No, but we're excited to have Ramon here, and I can already tell that he's, he's diving right in, and definitely is looking at the operation as a long-term plan, and already making, you know, strategic moves to make us stronger. But I'm sure it's going to be, you know, a couple, three months for him to get his, his arms wrapped around the whole situation, especially since he's in the middle of a move of his entire operation, which, which is kind of a nice benefit, you know, it gives you a chance to move, start over in a way, and then, you know, it'll be another restart when he comes back to his new, new facility, which will be exciting the middle of next year. Just a couple things before we get into my report, I would say, I did double-check with Ramon. Actually, the, the irrigation system that we're bringing in will have a rain gauge, that's not part of the weather station, so the actual shut-off, we will have that capability with the new system. So when we get X amount of rain, it'll shut off our system.
Okay.
The other thing, just relative to the golf fund last year and our capital expense, we roughly underspent our capital around a hundred thousand dollars last year, and that, that mostly revolved around the kitchen renovation that we determined, you know, wasn't going to be adequate, was going to be more of a Band-Aid, you know, that we, we pulled back from to make sure we didn't either underutilize or waste that, that funding. Just a really short synopsis of our financials, really had a phenomenal year when you consider that in 2015 was kind of where the Canadian dollar was still in a good spot when we were in the season, and then for us to go to 2016, and actually to have our golf revenues go up fifty thousand dollars, basically our dues, you know, held the line from our memberships at around six hundred and fifteen thousand, and then our golf revenues from our public play went up fifty thousand. And that's actually with not much of a change in traffic. So that, that really shows that we were able to, our reputation is preceding us, and we didn't have to discount our fees as much as we have in the past, you know, to get people to come and play, and we've also been able to increase those fees at a reasonable, you know, four percent, five percent pace, to get people still coming. Beyond that, those are the, year over year, when you factor out the increased money in golf course maintenance we spent, which we actually spent over the summer, and the incentive, this fiscal year we're closing was thirty-seven thousand dollars better than the previous year. So that was a nice, nice improvement to see that. Other things that are pretty much on my list, looking forward, since we're reviewing a year and looking, looking back, is our utilization of our building and obviously our kitchen, and that we're looking at that, that's a goal for this coming year. We actually have a calendar for our building usage now, to try to get that wall down in the middle of the, middle of the facility as much as possible, to use our whole, our whole facility. Next, the, the thing that I would like to have at, when the meeting's over, to have the supervisors discuss, is our memberships. Supervisor Camp, you know, did bring up that we don't have a tight description of those memberships, and I think specifically, what I would like to be able to do is to bring back or understand for the golf committee if this is something they should be talking about at all, or if the, if the supervisors will be doing the analysis of the memberships, or if we would have maybe, you know, a subcommittee, a sunshine committee that might look at that. But we definitely need to, you know, look at our membership program and make sure that it's in the right, in the right spot for all the fees, and that we're, you know, that we have clearly defined definitions of who fits into each one. You know, course maintenance, Ramon is jumping right in, but I can tell that the way that he is going to approach, you know, course maintenance is the same way that I would, you know, overall health of the plant, the membership, what type of golf course, as far as conditioning, you know, they're looking for, and what kind of conditioning benefits us going forward. On December the seventh, we're going to have what's, I guess, termed in the industry as a fam trip, like a familiarization trip, where twelve sports writers from different magazines that are predominantly in Florida will be visiting Sun and Lake through the Tourist Development Council, and then I'm actually the leader of the Citrus Golf Trail, which is basically the golf courses in Highlands County. They'll come in on the fifth, sixth, and seventh, and basically play Highlands Ridge, Pine Crest, Lake Placid, and then they'll end with us on the last day, playing at Sun and Lake. And Ron Garrel, I believe, is gonna be the, like a keynote speaker, if you wanna call it that, for that group, and I'll be talking to Ron, you know, on that day to try to get some of his ideas as we look forward, since we have a tee renovation on our plans and other things to look forward at the golf course. Beyond that, that's really all I have to report, unless you all have any. Oh, one last thing that I did miss, that I would also like you to address after the meeting. One of our most pending issues as a club or as the golf committee, which is maybe a minor issue, but a major issue, is the scrub jay and how we play it when we play golf, you know, whether, it had been a lateral hazard for a long period of time, and then recently, when it was cleaned out a couple years ago, it's been played us through the green, and currently, you know, it's something that the golf committee has wrestled with, with the handicap and rules committee, with, with the handicap and rules committee, you know, basically being the committee that they're relying on to make that choice. And I would just like for the supervisors to discuss, I'm not sure that's the right committee to be making that choice. You know, that's a committee that's designed primarily, that committee's in place by direction of the USGA to make sure everybody's handicap is correct. That, that's the major function of the committee, you know, basically that somebody who shoots par, doesn't have a ten handicap and win every event, you know, that you have, that that's research, so that's the major process of that committee. They also do other things to make sure, like course ratings and, and whole allocations are up to date. But when you look at how controversial this issue is, and how important, important it is to the club, I don't know that that committee with their call and their makeup is actually the committee that, you know, we want looking at that and being the driving force. So I'd like the supervisor's idea as to whether they would think they would be the ones who would address that, whether we do a survey of the entire membership to get an idea of how that would be, and then how Casper would play into that. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Mark? No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the list is code enforcement, and then followed by security. Mike, you wanna give us a quick rundown?
Yeah, there were three, five violations for code enforcement, and there were nine hundred and thirty-four watch orders done by security. We've done over six thousand miles last month, there weren't, there weren't too many issues out there, it was actually pretty quiet. The, the watch orders are starting to come down a little, but they're still up there, you know, we're still doing over nine hundred a month, so besides that, it was pretty quiet.
Okay. Where?
It's good. Except for one area with dogs barking. We're addressing that.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Move on to the general counsel report.
Well, there hasn't been a lot of movement, quite honestly.
Good.
The, well, the Ayala matter, I assume you all received my memorandum on that, and I think that pretty much explains it, the brief synopsis for the, the public is that we still don't have a ruling, but we're hoping that when we do get this ruling, that it will eliminate the majority of the counts, and the remaining counts, that potential will be left, that'll be handled by Tom Gonzalez's firm, and I believe, based on my conversations with him, they'll be also moving for summary judgment, so this is, you know, we're just, it's, it's stuck right now, until the judge takes some action. If I'm telling you the same thing at the December meeting, I'll probably have a conversation with Roper and Roper. So this is, you know, we're just, it's stuck right now until the judge takes some action. If I'm telling you the same thing at the December meeting, I'll probably have a conversation with Roper and Roper about whether or not it's, you know, we need to seek, you know, to contact the judge's office and say, hey, you know, what's the holdup? Speaking, I spoke to Tom Gonzalez, Tanya, and I did have a conference call with him about our issue with our, you know, liability that's on the books, with Fifth Third, the Fifth Third Bank issue. Mr. Gonzalez is planning to prepare an engagement letter to send to us about potentially seeking some redress from the state, you know, because that puts us in a state of emergency every year. I believe there's administrative procedure that we can go through to try and get that removed, through, you know, the state of emergency issue removed from the state. And that's the, the engagement letter should basically spell out if we, you know, what Mr. Gonzalez will do to try and get that removed, and when we get that, we'll bring that to the board. I know Supervisor Edgell, you discussed the issue about potentially obtaining attorney's fees under the, for the sunshine loss stuff or violation issues that we were facing. Based on my research in that 286.011, that you have the ability to seek attorney's fees, but to, based on my interpretation, that's if someone, it was to put forth a public records request, and then the district were to deny, you know, deny that public records request, and then that person were to seek redress through the courts. And if the courts then found that, you know, the district was correct in denying that public records request, then we could recover our attorney's fees that way. But since we had, you know, since with the, everything that happened with the state attorney's office, and they found probable cause to move forward, I hope there's any way to go after attorney's fees in that scenario.
Do you have another question on that?
Sure, absolutely.
I kind of thought that's where that was going to go. How about on, since the fees were so exorbitant for this, this basically one of them, does the state of Florida, the state bar, has an ethics committee?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And would there be any redress there, or be important, would it help us to file any type of complaint that this, those costs were absolutely too high for what?
I don't think so. And I say enforcing, that's probably going to be because of who was hired, A, because of who was hired, where they were from, like I say, and while we think those costs are exorbitant, and they are, by Highlands County standards, by Boca Raton, you know, East Coast standards, they absolutely were not. They were very run-of-the-mill. So I don't know that that's, you know, that that's going to get us anywhere as far as appealing to the ethics committee. And also the fact that, you know, we were made aware of the hourly rates, or the board was made aware of the hourly rates, and they voted to approve them, so.
Well, that's in, that's the only options I could find.
And speaking to that, I did check, Mr. Cosi had brought up the May versus Shaw language, and I did check the original 09-10 resolution. It did contain Shaw, so there was not a, we did not do any change of the language when we moved it over to the policy manual.
Okay. Thank you, David. General managers report.
Just a quick update on the maintenance facility. E.O. Cook is estimating a December 5th mobilization date. That's just an estimation. Now, our permit is still, has not been, a final permit has not been approved by Highlands County yet, okay? So, but E.O. Cook is expecting to hear from the county this week. Of course, today's Friday, but they're anticipating December 5th. We will be bringing a change order to the board for the December 9th meeting. Remember, we had discussed the schedule and values at several previous meetings, and we'll be bringing a change order to you for that project. We paid Duke Energy $20,946 for 1,200 feet of new conduit for the maintenance facility and the power service for the water plant. So that conduit is going to be installed by E.O. Cook, and that will be a change order also brought to you as well. And it's very necessary for us to upgrade the power on the water plant. Right now, we have an overhead line, and this conduit is going to be completely underground. I mean, if something were to happen, if we had a major storm, and I know that Drew could probably speak to it more, but we feel that the conduit for the water plant should be underground as well as the maintenance facility. You all have received a copy of the mold inspection report, and it did not reveal any significant moisture or mold or other indoor issues or air quality issues. Highlands County Road and Bridge Department has been hired by me to update the district's road condition level assessments for the upcoming year, and this is only for the roads east of Cortez. Or Cortez Road, it runs north and south, so all of our roadways that we want to find out what the condition levels are east of Cortez. And they're going to provide a written report to me along with a map. So I should, as soon as they start that, they're going to contact me, so it should be within the next couple of months. In the 2016-2017 budget, we have $50,000 allocated towards Turega Street. And if you remember from the April 26th meeting, some of you were not here for that meeting, but if you do get a chance, there is a PowerPoint presentation provided at a special meeting that Gator Howerton presented to the public. The option in his PowerPoint selection, or in his presentation, he represented the different ideas and the different maintenance and infrastructure and the costs for that street. It was under agreement at that point that option number three on that PowerPoint presentation would be estimated to be about $450,000 to completely overhaul the entire drainage infrastructure of that street. And we are, the board authorized us to send letters to the homeowners of Turega Street, and we are in the process of actually finalizing those letters now to send to the residents of the street. And all residents will have to consent to this project 100%. Their assessment could be anywhere from $10,000 to, we're estimating up to 12, possibly, just depending, and we're looking at a few options, but each resident would have to consent to that, to that cost.
Each lot owner, yeah. And the, basically to say what we're doing, we're drafting up this letter, it's an initial, because there's a process that's going to, that we're going to have to go through in order to do this special assessment. And based on that, the prior meeting we had and what the board's willing to do, if we don't have 100% participation, then we're not willing to move forward with it.
As of November 7th, I am officially a certified district manager, and this was a scholarship provided to me through the Florida Association of Special Districts, and the course was sponsored by Florida State University. So that's as of November 7th. And the bid opening for the drainage work is November 29th at 2:00 p.m. So we had no vendor show up for the pre-bid meeting on Wednesday, and we're going to be planning, you know, a discussion for you at the December 9th meeting.
Okay. Congratulations on your advancement.
I have just one question for you. When I went through this report, when you did the mold study and so forth like that, they did come up with some recommendations, four recommendations about the roof and the lights and so forth like that. So you all decided those weren't, doesn't really need to be addressed?
No, actually, we've, we're going to talk about that a little bit further. And I believe, you know, as far as the ceiling tiles, we definitely believe that those should be replaced. We have water damage throughout the...
So you're going to do some of those recommendations?
Yes. Mike and I are going to talk about this in detail.
When was that coming up?
We're going to do part of it in discussion.
Oh, it's a you thing, huh?
Huh?
It's, you're going to bring it up?
Well, I'm going to bring it up in discussion, or to bring it out and go from there.
We're learning. How you guys do it?
At least.
That's all.
Thank you. Unfinished business, any?
None.
New business?
No.
No more committee reports?
No.
Public comment? Everybody sitting still? Okay, discussion to and from the board.
I have one.
All right, ready? Lee Riddell.
Okay, I've been going around and talking to people and so forth like that, find out that we have a situation in Sun 'n' Lake where people have boats and RVs and have no place to store them. And we have, Mike's report showed it was nine RV violations just this last month. So I've been talking to some of the people just to see what they want to do, and there are people looking for a storage area. Now, I went over to Tanglewood, they have a large storage area, and many of the people that live over Tanglewood live there because they can store their boat and their RV over there. It's, so I found a place on, in Sun 'n' Lake and got Mike aside to go with me to take a look at it over beside Number One Green on Deer to your right. There's an area there where we stored cuttings and branches and just rubbish for years. He's been working on cleaning that out. So my idea was, was to do a study, which I will do, to use that area, have that area cleaned out, fence them with chain link fencing. You can enter that area by coming up the cart path. Tom, what you brought up is what I'm talking about here, was that cart path right through there, you can have a car on or an RV, it's that wide, and come in that way and charge people to store their RVs and their boats right there on site. Now, ran it by Mike just because that's his baby wick, and he's agreed with that. And what I want to do is to get the board to consider that, and let me go out and do a study and see how many boats and RVs there are of our people that want to store them right there. I asked Mike about what are you going to do with that area? There was no, you know, with the new building going in, we can't take them in that way, but we can take them in the way I saw them by Number One. But that area's not going to be used, but we can make use for our residents right there. And if you think about it, it's a win-win situation in this aspect, you charge them for it to keep them there. So in some point in time, you're going to have it paid for, and then we start making money off of it. So, and, but it's going to be a real deal for some people. My neighbor right across the street was going to buy a boat and couldn't do it because he couldn't get it in his garage. And people had to build these houses with big garages on them, so this may cure that problem and give something back to them. Security's available over there. We can set up the rules and so forth later on who just Sun 'n' Lake, just like we do over at Tanglewood. And so that's a plan I have, if you get blessing of the board to, that you'd consider something like that once I got it and come back to show you, from the financials to the land, the whole deal.
I can go forward.
Yep.
Okay, I'll get with Mike and Tanya, and we're going to, we'll get started.
Okay. All right. Oh, one more?
Yeah, since we did this, if you guys would tell the people that have boats that we are, and RVs, that we are going to do this, we're planning on, and to get in touch with me, okay? But we're, we're a way of getting it out in the newsletter and so forth like that. Okay, I'm done.
Mike, can you get something to bring up?
I've got a couple of things. I know, talking with Jim, Jim wants us to see if we can come up with the golf, what responsibilities we want to give the golf committee and what responsibilities us as supervisors want to take on, like memberships, you know, anything financial in my mind would be a supervisor's thing, but it's something we haven't talked about, and I know we can't, we can discuss a little of it here now, but it's just something for you to think about what your thoughts are, because, you know, I have my own thoughts, but I'm in favor of the majority of this, of the board, of what you want or do. And we haven't talked about it, but, you know, and I have, because I think there's been a lot of things done that I didn't particularly agree with and don't know how they even got done, so. And as all my concern is, is to do what the majority of the board wants, so.
My thought and answer to a little bit of your question is, I'd like to transfer as much of that, much of that over to the golf committee as possible. Like the staking of the thing, if the membership wants this thing staked, you know, that's something I don't think us as board members need to get involved in. We got enough to do without that.
I agree, anything, and that's not a, you know, that's...
I agree with you on the financial thing, like with this, with this free membership and how we need to separate the three or the five. Let's discuss that later on in this meeting, and, yeah, we'll take care of that, but other than that, I'd like to see the golf committee do most of the rest of it.
Well, I'm in favor of that too, but when it, there has been several things, like the Canadian tour coming. You know, that's, that's something I think we should, the supervisors should talk about, and if it's a golf, the red state issue, that's, as long as the, is the golf committee, well, take a survey. And sometimes I see that we have certain people on certain committees and they don't take a, it could be an overwhelming, from my standpoint, that I hear the members want...
And it goes the other way.
And it goes the other way. And that's, I'm going, who do we have on these committees? Because it's just like me, I make decisions up here based on what people want, whether it's my view or not, but I see too many things going to one or two particular people's opinion, and I'm concerned about Sun 'n' Lake residents and Sun 'n' Lake members of the golf course. And that's, that would be my only thing that I would get irritated about, on those kind of things.
Anything else?
No, yes, on the kitchen. And this is a question to everybody, Tanya and you, because I don't know if it started and worked on or not, but I want, when we start working on it, I feel like the golf maintenance facility got real big before the supervisors knew about it. I'd kind of like to be, not all of us, not just me, in the process of, I don't want it built so dang big and we're going to say no right away, but I'd like us all to, in the future, before the kitchen is decided, to talk about it at these meetings and what we think is, should be done before we spend a lot of money to, for a $2 million kitchen or, you know, because my thoughts are a little less for a $2 million kitchen.
You're trying to get some things together for an architect, is that right?
To advertise the RFP for the architect, yes. We will, we will have a workshop.
Okay.
We'll have multiple workshops if we need it.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay.
And one other issue, Mike, this would be for Mike. I've talked to you about the golf carts from, the people aren't members and they're just, I see lots and lots of golf carts.
Right.
Is it feasible that we could, and you could even enforce it? That's my concern, because I don't want to add something that can't be enforced, but there is, I have to pay insurance, get a sticker, pay $100 a year for my golf cart, and I see, I've seen hundreds of them running around without golf stickers and driven by 12-year-olds. So is, if we would talk about and get the resolution up, could that be enforced?
Well, I would like to see, first of all, at 14-years-old, you can't drive a golf cart unless you're at least 14. I brought this up a couple of years ago to Michael, right? Like Tanglewood, they registered their, they register their carts. I would like to see anyone that has a cart at Sun 'n' Lake to register and have like a $10 fee. Yeah, it's going to be more workforce, but the problem is when we have trouble, we don't know who they are and they take off, and I really think it would be better for the whole community to, everybody register their golf cart, even if they're not a member. So there would be a number on the golf cart. I don't see a big problem except for reg, well, initially, it would be kind of tough to, you know, to get everybody to come register, but then, then when we pull up on somebody and there's a 14-year-old kid, and sometimes they don't give names and they take off on us, and they're doing damage, we have, you know, no control to catch them unless we call a share, and they're in the same boat as us. So, I mean, I would love to see to have all golf carts here at Sun 'n' Lake registered with a tag on it, even if we don't charge them. I mean, you know, we get, oh...
Well, we'd have to probably pay for the sticker, but I, my concerns would be insurance and stuff like that that we have to do, and how do we do that, Tanya? Do we, do we do it, or do we ask you or Mike?
We've got to have a resolution, don't we?
We would need a resolution, but first I'd like for David to research the Florida statutes on the...
Yeah, I'd just like to know if it's possible.
Having a registration system, we would have to create and implement something like that. I don't know if there would be a charge necessarily. I don't even know that we would have that ability just yet, but we, it's something we can research, get back to you.
I don't know if you've seen them, but there's a lot of kids and adults running around in carts that, I don't know if they're insured, because I have to, if I run around, it has to be insured, and a lot of kids, a lot of kids driving these things.
Is that a requirement to be a golf member, the insurance part of it?
It is.
It is, okay.
And that's all I'd like, is to make sure they're insured. And that's all I'd like is to make sure they're insured and so we're, so we don't get, I mean, I'm sure.
I'm not sure the requirements of insurance for golf carts.
Homeowners covers a little bit of it, I think, in your homeowner's policy, but I'm not sure how far that goes where we can drive them on the street.
Right.
And I incorrectly stated, it's not part of our trail fee, but it's a requirement of the course that we have insurance. So when you get your trail fees and things, you also have to show approval of insurance.
This, the course.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark? Uh, okay. Um, I talked to Mike earlier this week and we talked about the mold a little bit and the mold assessment came back way better than what we all anticipated that it could possibly, and thank goodness. Uh, Mike had talked about going in and replacing tiles in the, in the district office and, and pulling out what, a little bit of mold that we have in the, in the, uh, insulation. Uh, one of the things I wanted to talk to you about before he gets into that is, as you all know, we've got some late leaks in the roof. Uh, Mike brought up something that, let's throw it out for discussion and see where you want to go on it. Uh, I'll let him get into the figures in a minute, but he, we've got a shingle roof on it now and then a flat roof on the top. Uh, basically they call it something ice and.
Ice and water.
Ice, ice and water that they put on the flat roof. It's a, it's a plastic or it's a covering for it. And I don't know if they put it underneath the shingles or not, but, uh, we can go that way. Uh, what we need to do is, is make up something to, uh, to get some bids on it. One of the things he also mentioned, uh, if we're going to replace the roof, do you want to consider putting a metal roof on it in ten similar to the clubhouse to make it match?
And the longevity of a metal roof versus.
Also would be a lifetime roof. And one more possibility, do you want to have, uh, one of the construction companies give an estimate to put rafters above the flat roof and either shingle it then or put metal on the very top of it to eliminate the flat roof? There's several different options.
Well, I think they're all great ideas. I think that, uh, you know, when you toss out ideas about should we use a metal roof versus a tile roof versus, uh, I'm kind of looking a little bit forward and I'm saying, well, somewhere in this capital plan, we're looking at rebuilding or relocating the district offices. You know? So I would be in favor, if we're, if we're looking to leave the facility there and rebuild it or remodel it there, then the value of putting a metal roof might be the best solution. But if we're looking to put it in another area, I think that's money that's going to be thrown down the drain for the short term. I, that's, so I think there's a lot of things we need to look at, but I think they're all great ideas.
Uh, there's about a $20,000 difference between metal and, um, oh.
Shingles.
The shingles, so.
Um, tell us to put on the ice on the.
The ice and water on top is just a flat roof.
On the top and the shingles on it, what?
That's about 42,000, well, it's roughly around $42,000. I went out and got two or three prices because I knew we were getting ready for this. Uh, then I also got a price on the metal roof, um, and they said it was around 62, 65. Um, to, to put a peak on the roof, um, to take the flat roof off, everybody calls it the Pizza Hut building. Um, so to change the look of that, um, it'll be a little more. Um, so you're probably talking around 75,000 to change it to metal, to change the, the, uh, the peaks on the roof. You have to change, um, um, other facial board around, the whole building's all rotted. Um, you know, so there's a lot of work in, but the roof is 20-years-old. The shingles up there, I was told they're about 20-years-old, so it's due to be, to get done.
It is due.
The building itself is structurally very strong, so.
Well, kind of, one of the things I guess I would think about is maybe leaving that flat roof up there and, and eliminating that cost. Uh, and I would be in favor of either putting, getting bids on either shingles or, or metal. Uh, I like the idea of metal, it matches the other one, but as far as keeping this building forever, uh, as I understand it, it's, it's not, not going to be big enough or adequate in a few more years. And we're at least two years or three years to build, from building a new one.
Well, I.
Well, um, we went out and got some prices, uh, on a new building or to have this remodeled. It was cheaper to build a new building than it was that remodeled.
Then that kind of answers your question as to whether you want to put a, a metal roof on there that lasts 25, 35 years. Why, why would you put, go through that expenditure only to tear it down at a future date?
Yeah.
That wasn't the plan was to tear it down, was it?
No, no plans at all to tear it down.
No, we don't have any plan to tear it down.
Yeah, they were going to just reassign offices over there and so forth is what I understood.
We've talked about it a lot of what we could, I mean, there's a lot of uses for that building.
Yeah.
Even if we don't have a district office.
Well, I know.
An information center would be, you know, uh, oh, I mean.
We've talked about that a lot, real estate office, things like that. Um, but I've noticed with, with flat roofs, I know, uh, we built three federal courthouses and we put flat roofs on them, but one damn one of them didn't leak after a while. Flat roofs leak.
Right.
I don't care what you put on them, they leak.
Or in an area that rains constantly in summer.
So if you don't prop that and put joists in there, you're going to have auto moisture intrusion, uh, you're going to have microbial activity up there continued, you're really not moving along, you know, whether it's metal or whatever you put on it. But I, I just couldn't stand by and, and fix a flat roof because I may not be here in five years, but that leaf, that roof will leak.
I agree.
Um, Mike, you think there's like $20,000 difference between?
The metal and, uh, the shingles, yes.
And so you're looking probably, if you put a peak on the top of it, probably.
I don't see a real, real big cost, maybe around 10,000. I mean, but don't quote me, I don't want to be, you know.
So you're looking, you're looking at.
Don't quote me on every price.
You're looking at approximately 80,000 compared to, uh, peaking a, a shingle roof would be approximately 40, 50,000.
50,000, right. I.
Without getting estimates, which way, what are you thinking?
Well, in my opinion, I'd like to see the metal roof and I'd like to see the peak put in. Because I, in my mind, I have no plans to move the district office in my time.
Well, I was going to give it to Drew after the meeting and talk to him about, um, uh, changing the peak anyways. So why don't I go out and get prices on both sides and bring it back? It doesn't cost us anything anyways, so I'll bring it back to you and then we can go from there.
Yeah, that would require new trusses.
And we have to go out for bid anyways because it's going to be.
Does the board want us to go ahead and go through that process? Go ahead and get bid, formal bids for this roof?
Well, we need to fix it.
It's got to be fixed, I think.
Okay, I mean.
Can't have it leaking.
No, I, that's what we're looking for today is a consent, because this is a project that is not budgeted.
I think, come from what I'm hearing, that we would agree on, on a metal roof with a, with a lower pitch on the, on the peak.
That's fine.
So, see if we can get estimates.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Wally, I talked to you a second about, you've brought, brought this up before at least, uh, about, uh, trying to get, uh, new individuals down here, new members.
Yeah.
Are you, would you be willing to work with Tanya and chair a project to get whoever you need onboard to help you with it and give us some, some ideas of whether it's advertising on billboard sites or however the advertising goes to, to see if we can work some new members in?
Would you, yes, yes. I'd be glad to do that. That, that is a thing of mine that started, uh, I said that upfront, I want to come on the board. I'd be glad to do that, um, and I'll work with them. I've already got some stuff started on that, but it just wasn't a project, this other project caught me first, you know, I thought it was more important. But yeah, I will get with Tanya and Tanille and, um.
Tanille?
And we, we have the other, um, I've been getting information that the, uh, uh, there's other groups in this whole area that's, that's working, that, that one of the county commissioners told me that I was invited to those meetings. Yeah, I'll do, we'll do that. We'll work on that.
All right. Uh, other thing, we talked about the three-month and the five-month thing. Uh, do we want to, do you want to make a decision of where we draw the line for the membership?
Well, I'm just, I'm concerned, I didn't mention it at first, but I, when we passed this, I thought about the one-month membership and thought that was part of it, but that's okay. But I'm afraid if, if we don't address it next month, we're going to have somebody bought a three-month. And, and that's why I would like to.
Okay, do you want to?
I, I mean, I don't, I don't have a preference either way. I, I would like the consensus of you guys. I just want to get it in stone and let's go by it. I mean, I, it's not a, for me, it's not a big deal unless it is, I'll go along with what anybody wants, but I don't want it changed. I want a decision.
I'd like, I'm like you, I'd like to have it in stone. What do you think about the three months? Is that, do they, is that still qualified to, as a trial thing or do we need to draw the line? What's your feeling, Mark?
Uh, since we're trying to entice people to come down to this area, you know, I certainly feel that three months is a very reasonable amount of time. I think it's, uh, something that should be included so that they could in fact take advantage of, of a trial, of a, of a free membership for one year. Uh, but I also think it has to be defined as to, if this is their first time they're getting a three-month membership and then they decide to buy, it's one thing, but if they, they get a three-month membership for three years in a row.
Yeah.
That's, you know, so I think it has to be defined.
One three-month. That, that's your thought?
Yes.
Wally?
I, I agree with that and, and go back to the point with Jim or whoever takes that check from those people, uh, to tell them what our policy is. You know, so they know that if they do this, they don't qualify, right? They're not going to qualify for the free membership.
Right.
But they need to be told upfront. I think that's where this got a little loose when you got a member.
They can have one three-month, but that's it.
Right.
I'm, I'm with that.
I would, Jim, you got it?
You're saying one three-month and still qualify for the.
Right.
Correct. Free year.
Right, free year. No five-month, the five-months.
Correct. And we're only regulating from now until December 31st of 16 because we have a new resolution, it'll be coming for 17. So you can define exactly what you want in that resolution. But what I'm hearing is we're going to, we need to reach out and we're going to make it part of our contract, you know, in big letters when they sign that says if you, if you have been a member for more than three months, so that would, you have to get the terminology, but when someone goes for their second three-month thing, they've, they've been a member for more than three months, so.
And as far as I'm concerned.
So we're going to include the three-month members, if somebody purchases between now and December 31st, 2016, and they've been a three-month member once, we're going to include them into the new homeowner free membership program. And then we'll look at 2017 to have that written properly to make it tighter, if you want to make it that way. And then we're going to get that into writing, you know, big letters right above where they sign so they know right where they stand since it is a big, it's a big expense difference. You know, for a full family, there's a, a big difference, which is why we're doing it to try to get them to, you know, it can make the difference when you're looking at a hundred thousand dollar purchase and they can save, you know, 25, 3, 2,500 to 3 grand by buying in Sun 'n Lakes. It can be a difference maker.
As far as I'm concerned, that's not only for the rest of 16, it's, would be in 17 from then on out too.
Yes, don't we have to make a new resolution?
Yeah, we're going to make, we're going to bring a new resolution and that, and we'll address that in the, in the resolution to extend it.
Okay.
You would have to just have it.
Okay. Uh, I don't have anything else besides that. Wanted to bring those up for discussion and that's all I have.
That's all I have.
Me too.
Me too.
Okay. Jim, you got?
This one, so it is my understanding since the red stakes is such a big issue that we want to bring that to the membership to get their, to get their feedback on that item so that we're, you know, so the golf committee's dealing with what the membership wants as opposed to a small part of the membership.
I, I personally don't, I don't want to get involved in the golf committee's business. That's what they're there for, the red stakes and whatnot, but I think in all honesty, they should at least go out to the membership, however they decide to do that versus maybe, maybe making it amongst eight people or whatever that total commu, uh, committee is. That's just my thought. I don't know with these guys.
No problem there. Anything else from the public?
Dave, can I just say one word?
Yes, sir. One word.
Is it high or low?
It needs to be high.
It probably needs to be high.
Bill Nor, Bill Norcross, former, uh, chairman of the golf committee and still a member. We have gone over this red-staked area so many times, it's ridiculous. You guys shouldn't be dealing with this. It should be a golf committee decision.
We already said that.
We just said that. I, I understand that. I understand that. But this has been polled before. Jim hasn't been here, but the previous golf pro made a decision. And then Mike has promised to keep that area where the red stakes were clear as much as possible. Now, we can review that and we discussed that at the meeting today. If the money is not appropriate, appropriated and the, and the areas aren't cleared, then maybe we have to look at certain holes that have to restore the red stakes. But I feel as though it's part of the golf committee and all this little nonsense about, well, let's look at it again. As, as Mike says, you know, you never know what is going on and, until it happens and you find out, there's another venue, there's another, there's another avenue, there's, there's, we, whether you're a homeowner and getting a, a free membership and then we have another problem with, well, he was a previous member. We just try to eliminate the problems and I think it should be done in-house on the golf committee. And if there's a big problem, can get to you guys. So I think it's been resolved before and if it's not going to be, if the members aren't that happy, they can petition us. There's no problem.
And membership needs to know that you're going to be doing something like that through the committee. If they don't know, they can petition you. That's all I'm saying.
Absolutely. We, I really, I wrote up notes and, and Jim, I, I hope is included in the monthly information for members of what is going to happen. And as I say, from what I understand, as, and Mike is going to try to keep those areas clean. If he hasn't got the funding for it, if he can't, then we have to really look at it again. But right now, I think it's, uh, it's inappropriate to keep on bringing, rehashing this stuff. It really is.
I would like to make one more comment. Personally, though, I don't care what they do if they put red stakes or they don't. I don't, I don't even want that on my plate. There's more important things to do. What I am saying is whatever the committee decides to do with that, that should be the word. But I don't want a dozen people coming up to me two weeks later or three weeks later saying, how come there's white stakes or red stakes? I just want them to know what's going to happen so I don't have to, because when I turn around and say to them, go to the golf committee, you know, it's like, you know, they're coming to me.
Well, if they don't read their, their monthly notes, uh, it's not our fault. Uh, ignorance is no. Uh, ignorance is no, it's, is, uh, I don't know, you can't plead ignorance if you're going to rob a bank, you know, gee, I didn't know. So, just to take, take this nonsense off of you guys, that's why we have a golf committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, William. Adjourned.[1785.62]